It's a joint work between me and my BA student of University of Brasilia and Ricky Saviel Fernandez. Okay, what is the objective of the article? This article investigates the relationship between fiscal multipliers and disguised unemployment in Brazil, focusing on the effectiveness of expansionary fiscal policies in the eastern areas of labor underutilization. Based on a literature review for calculating disguised unemployment in Brazil and application of a vector autoregressive model, the impact of fiscal shocks from GDP in the rates of open and disguised unemployment are analyzed. The existence of disguised unemployment in Brazil, particularly in the traditional services sector, is confirmed. Additionally, the results indicate that investment shocks and other expenditures present the highest positive fiscal multipliers, while payroll expenditures have a negative impact. Finally, the analysis also highlighted that fiscal policies aimed at increasing income transfers may be a viable path to reducing disguised unemployment. Okay, so let's talk a little about the theoretical foundations. The first one, which is the Latin American structuralism of Akrak. Two concepts: the first one is heterogenous structural heterogeneity and productive specialization of peripheric economies. According to Harold Prades, the paper of 1949, the so-called Latin American Manifesto, peripheric economies had a production structure that at the same time heterogeneous and specialized. Structural heterogeneity means that there are huge differences of labor productivity between sectors of the economy, mainly the substantial traditional sector and the modern or capitalist sector.
That's exactly, yeah.
We have to share the presentation. Since we have to use another computer.
No problem. There may be two marvels. Two marvels: one in your clone. Or you in the parallel universe. Now it's okay? Okay, just reduce this. Yeah, please. Technology.
Yeah, it's helping us as you can see.
Okay, thank you. So regarding theoretical foundations, one main concept is structural heterogeneity and productive specialization of peripheric economies. According to Harold Prades' paper of 1949, the so-called Latin American Manifesto, peripheric economies had a production structure that is less at the same time heterogeneous and specialized. Structural heterogeneity means that there are huge differences of labor productivity between sectors of the economy, mainly between the substantial traditional sector and the modern or capitalist sector. Productive specialization means that peripherical economies are inserted in the international division of labor as a primary goods exporters. And the concept that you do not like, but is under development. Underdevelopment means the coexistence of a manufacturing sector that had already reached a high degree of diversification and has a participation in output that is little different from that observed in the developed countries with a typically pre-capitalist employment structure in which a large part of its population was all away to the benefits of economic development. This is the definition of the Brazilian economist Souza Fortado in his book of 1961. Well, second theoretical foundations, Keynes and macroeconomics. The theoretical concept is the fiscal multipliers. Since output and employment are constrained by effective demand, even in the long run, fiscal policy may be required to generate the highest level of employment possible, given the supply-side constraints of the economy. Fiscal multipliers are a measure of the impact over aggregate demand and output on an increase in government expenditures. It is important to notice that recent developments of the fiscal multiplier literature had shown that the magnitude of multiplier depends on the type of government expenditure, which could be public investments, social transfers, payrolls and other expenditures, as well as the level of evenness of capacity and employment utilization. Fiscal policy is in general more effective when the fiscal stimulus is done by public investments and the economy is not near a supply constraint. Well, this is some data about specifically the Brazilian economy, which I call the puzzle of the Brazilian labor market economy, which means a middle-income economy with a huge subsistence factor. As you can see in table number one, informal employment responds to more than fifty-five percent of the total employment in the economy and the self-employed is almost thirteen percent. So when we add the informal employment and the self-employment, we have almost thirty percent of all labor force working in what can be considered subsistence factor. This is what an underdeveloped economy means. Okay, well, can we do a synthesis between both concepts? Yes, with the idea of disguised unemployment. In a dual economy with low productivity and a high productivity sector, a flow of attractive demands will reduce the level of employment in the modern sector. Due to the inexistence or low coverage of unemployment benefits, workers that are fired from the modern sector has no other alternative in spite of looking for living in the subsistence or low-productive sector of the economy. Since the factor is not constrained by effective demands, these workers will get a job, so called job, at the low-productivity activities and will not be counted in official unemployment statistics. But as soon as they are able to get a job at the modern sector, they will leave the subsistence sector, showing that jobs in this sector was not the case, but an involuntary separation caused by decreasing labor demands at the modern sector. Well, Brazil and disguised unemployment. The phenomenon of disguised unemployment is a scarce and explored but interesting concept about the workings of the labor market with profound implications for economic development. While the traditional unemployment rates can capture a portion of unemployed people, disguised unemployment also includes those who, though the dynamic of the labor market, work in extremely competitive or low-quality employment situations. In the Brazilian context, the use of disguised unemployment as a proxy for economic performance is justified by the need for a more comprehensive and representative measure of the labor market as assuming that traditional indicators may underestimate the true extent of unemployment and therefore compromise the formulation of a popular public policies. By incorporating disguised unemployment as an indicator of the situation of the labor market, a more comprehensive bill of the country's labor realities should allow for a more accurate analysis of a common side and consequently providing a clear perception of the impact of fiscal policies. Okay, there are five types of fiscal multiplier. You do not extend too much because it's common knowledge in the literature, but we have the impact multiplier, the Arizon multiplier, the peak multiplier, the cumulative multiplier and the cumulative multiplier at present value. Review, briefly review the literature on fiscal multipliers. For purpose of literature review, the focus will be on studies based on VAR model and its evolution. Apparently studying the analysis of the multiplier is Bronchard and Perrotti. This authors' empirically critically characterize the effects of changes in government spending and taxes on production using structural vector autoregressive models with identification restriction. In short, this study observes a percent of peak multipliers between zero point nine and one point two for public spending and between minus zero point eight and minus one point two for taxes. Certainly, certainly, the most controversial restriction of the model is that any dramatic spending not predicted by other variables could be considered a lazium shock devoluted, which has been questioned several times in subsequent studies. Therefore, other techniques are created to get around the problem of identification. In the case of Manfordi, in addition to introducing the concept of cumulative multiplier at the present value, the authors use a sign restriction to limiting post-response correlations. The cumulative multipliers at present value are two point zero seven for spending and minus four point five four for taxes. Okay, the financial crisis. The 2008 financial crisis renewed interest in fiscal multipliers as global economies began to implement fiscal policy as a central instrument to combat recession. It's in this context that whole brings an extensive debate of the factors that can impact the size of the multipliers. These factors include the shape of consumption function, the dynamics of labor market, the persistence of public spending and, as my colleague Manal P is contribution, the composition of fiscal policy. Well, this, I will skip that. Well, for us, what really matters is fiscal multipliers along business cycles. Among the metrological innovation came from Othmar Kinnigar and Dchinpo, who explore how output responses to fiscal policies vary over the complete cycle using Var novel with smooth transition. Unlike the traditional approach of Bronchard and Perrotti, which assume constant multipliers, they found that multipliers at public spending efficiency frequently with recessions and expansions. Furthermore, by breaking down the types of spending, they found that public investments have multipliers with over two long recessions much higher than other multipliers. This findings emphasize that fiscal multipliers are more robust in periods of low productivity, providing solid basis for expansionary fiscal policies in times of recession. Well, I'll skip this Brazilian literature and fiscal multipliers. Basically, but I will talk a little about recent Brazilian literature on fiscal multipliers. Brazilian literature begin to raise new tools from international literature to achieve increasingly well-funded conclusions. As a result, the focus has shifted to studies of the second period. Multipliers along the phases of business cycles and by spending category. But even my colleague Manal P is use the number in the model to sneak fiscal multiplier dependent upon a clinical site analyzing the periods from the second quarter of 1960 to the fourth quarter of 2011. And he found public investment multipliers between one point four and one point seven and net tax burden had multipliers between minus zero point two and minus zero point two. Okay. Well, I'll skip a little of that. Okay, you can't measure disguised unemployment. This article aims to calculate the fiscal multiplier, take a stand for the situation of the labor market, not only the fish on unemployment, but also the disguised unemployment and access impact of fiscal shock in the fish on disguised unemployment rates in Brazil. To do this, the disguised unemployment rate will be estimated using the methodology of Iturri and Milgate, which is adapted to reflect in particular other Brazilian case. The alter defines disguised unemployment as employment in very low productivity sectors, a characterization that will also be applied to this study. To classify a traditional sector as a productive, the sector's productivity must be less than eighty percent of that found in the country's manufactured sector. Okay, this is the bounds of Iturri and Milgate for the economies of Canada, France, Germany, Italy, Japan, United Kingdom and the United States. So we can apply the same exercise to Brazil. To obtain productivity data per worker, we use the same methodology as productivity indicator per worker, available as part of series from the Hedges-Bomani productivity observatory at FV Ibrí. The indicator is subdivided into twelve main sectors of Brazilian economy with data from valid adaptations from the Partria National Times and the dire population by sector from the Corinthians National Health Service Center. This is a best restriction of data to our model because this study started in 2012. And for the purpose of this study, the following sectors will be analyzed: advertising, manufacturing, construction, services and traditional services. Unlike the service sector, which covers all service sectors in the country, the traditional service sector, which are not subsectors related to financial insurance or state information purposes. Well, here we have the relative productivity of these sectors compared to the manufacturing sectors. The vision. And here we have the calculation of disguised unemployment in agriculture, construction and traditional services. As you can see, after 2021, only traditional sector has disguised unemployment. And there's the evolution of insured unemployment in blue, disguised unemployment in black, and true unemployment is the sum of both. Okay, then we made a model using the true unemployment as a proxy for the situation in the labor markets. And yes, I have to skip the methodology, estimation methodology, but it's a model. So what we found, this value is for the output, Arizon and cumulative multipliers for transfer, payroll, other expenses and investment. As you can see, the fiscal multiplier of investment expenditures is much higher than other types of government expenditures. And then we calculated the effect of each increase in government expenditures of open and true unemployment. And then we conclude that the results indicate that the true unemployment rate is more sensitive to fiscal shocks than the open unemployment rate, reflecting more clearly the variations caused by different types of government spending. While shocks to transfers and other spending plan to reduce both unemployment rates, these effects are not pronounced and the two words suggesting that the response might directly to this still be. On the other hand, shocks to payroll and investments pose a significant long-term risk only in the value of unemployment rate, highlighting the difficulties and the impact of these expanded activities in the labor market. Therefore, the amount of deductions in unemployment, both open and disguised, transfers appear to be the best option among the expenditures currently reminded. This is changing fact, and both government and workforce reasons, disguised unemployment, they agree to the fact that such investments enclose the labor, the land and construction sector, which have a considerably lower labor productivity than manufacturing sector, whereby includes disguised unemployment or the official unemployment rate is the reverse. So as my final remarks, the dramatic results indicates that the magnitude of the fiscal multiplier in Brazil, as well as the impact of unemployment rates varies considerably according to the type of government expenditure, with the overall impact on true unemployment being greater than observed before unemployment. This findings show that policies that public investment can be a source of economic growth, while income transfers spend out as an alternative for fighting unemployment. Overall, this article contributes to the literature by demonstrating that in economies with structural heterogeneity, as noted in Brazil, where the labor market is characterized by high informality and in the under-organization of workforce, disguised unemployment should be considered as an important variable in formulation of public policies. The use of measures that consider the relocation of labor between the traditional and modern sectors can provide a new perspective for formulating more effective fiscal policies aimed at both economic growth and improving the working conditions of the future. Well, many thanks.
Awesome, good paper. So to some few observations. The first one is that I found very interesting and maybe of inspiration for other studies, the fact that you went back to Iturri and Milgate, the definition of disguised unemployment. I think that's an interesting, anyway, it's an interesting approach, although of course to be thought about, especially since your empirical results are not very clear. First of all, they're not, I think in most cases, they're not statistically significant, which makes it doubtful whether we can, you know, really talk about the signs. If there is no, I don't know what range of statistical significance you consider, but I mean, that's a huge problem, of course. So maybe some refinement of your analysis, perhaps along the line of making a less, a stricter definition of the informal sector, I don't know, of the, sorry, of the disguised unemployment. The other reason, perhaps, I'm not sure, of course, is to be checked for this strange or non-significant results, is the, maybe there is to some extent an endogeneity of the labor force. So when you have an expansion or a contraction, the labor force also changes and this may affect your measures of the unemployment or whatever unemployment, explicit or disguised, etc., or true total. So maybe I think what it really, and also the signs are not always clear. Now you provided a possible explanation of the negative sign for public investment, but you often find these negative signs, which are not easy to digest, let's say. So I mean, interesting work, but I think you still need to refine the empirical part, or at least to interpret your results in a convincing way. Please, one, two, three.
Quelisone servizi avanzati. So servi, ah no, hai ragione. Traditional services, si, traditional sono i viola.
If you have, I was, I support, I was thinking, if you have expensive fiscal policy, I have reasons to believe that the informal sector should shrink, but I also have reasons to believe that the informal sector should expand. The informal sector to shrink, I understand, the mechanism, let's say, because the formal employment is increasing, the informal employment, the formal employment is increasing, but leaving the informality in for the disguise and any uniformality. But at the same time, because there are formal and informal sectors having actions, the demand for the informal sector also increases. And maybe the best simple, in comparison, example to see that is construction, is simple construction. When you get a job, the basic job of the informal sector, it will be going on. The first thing they start to do is to build a new home with a house. And for that, they find the day.
Yes, I know, yeah.
That is fully informed, that the day will not be for the center. The informal part is paid at the end of the day in cash, is completely outside. So this is, is an example why I expect the system to also increase for the skies. And that could be part of the reason why.
And you use this, otherwise the people who are listening.
And that could be part of the, oh, that's cool, may I use this when I present? This is very cool, yeah. And that may be part of the reason why the coefficients are not significant, because you have two mechanisms playing in opposite directions. I don't know if that makes sense. Think that has.
Adam, I do not listen. Because I, I really.
Sorry.
Not listen, so related to the second part, I'm very sorry, I will be very quick. But as a check, you can, so I've done a similar exercise in a model that was recently published, where we look at the effects on male and women, but I guess the procedure is the same. So you can look at the total effect on the total unemployed population and then you can split this population into two, the formal, the true unemployed and the rest, to check if there are changes in the input response functions that could explain the point raised by Mark.
Thank you very much, Jose, for such an interesting question. I think that your, your paper is a common and a suggestion is that.
So, I see, Ara, now?
That you're making a contribution in terms of the dominant literature of fiscal multipliers, because most of them, unless in most of the papers, for instance, that we have been able to see during this day, is that basically the analysis are based on the fact that the size of the fiscal multiplier and therefore the effectiveness or the impact of fiscal policy depends basically on the kind of, the type of public expenditures. It's depending, we are looking at, for instance, the, say, the economic classification, we divide the separate, for instance, fiscal transfers of a public investment, public consumption, or it depends on the economic classification. We are talking of health, active labor market policies, education and so on. But I think that the one relevant, one of your main contributions is that what you are saying is that, or suggesting, is that it does not depend only these factors, but also on the agents that are benefited from these expenditures. And yes, I mean in terms of papers, workers, economic sectors and so on, that is a factor, that is an element that crucially affect to the final impact of the fiscal policy in the rise of the different items of public expenditure. Because there has one of your implication is that what you are saying implicitly is that the size of the fiscal multipliers depends drastically on some effect that are usually rejected or not taken into account. That for instance, the impact on income distribution, it depends on how it affects the distribution in the case, for instance, on how it affects to different employers or the, for instance, to the composition on the economic, the sectoral composition of the economic activity. I think this is a very relevant point. Thank you. I think this is a very relevant point. Thank you.
May I?
Please, one minute.
One minute. Well, I think that maybe I do not be very clear about what is disguised unemployment. Disguised unemployment does not means informal employment. Formal or informal employment is can be just a question of tax evasion, you know? In Brazil, many liberal, uh, workers prefer to be informal in order to evade tax. And it, but they work in sectors with very high productivity. I'm talking about lawyers, I'm talking about engineers, even economists. So this is not the, 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 the vibe that it matters for what I'm working here. What matters is the difference between productivity in sectors of the economy. So, then, my, one of my strange results is that when you have a increase in public investment, the disguise or unemployment increases is because in Brazil, the construction sector, unlike what appears in New York and the United States, is a very low productivity sector. So, when you increase public investments, you increase construction. So you increase the labor force that is working in the construction sector. But since the, the productivity in the construction sector is much lower than the productivity of the manufacturing sector, this means that the disguise of unemployment increases. That's the, the, the reason. And, and for us, and that's the base difference of what was being discussed in the last section and I, what I'm discussing here. The, the Latin American economies are strictly heterogenous economies. So we have very high productivity sectors and very low productivity sectors. So what the economy produces is relevant for economic growth. And also for regulating fiscal policy. So, if you think in terms of impact of output, the best way is to increase the investment. But if you think in terms of reducing the structural heterogeneity of the economy to reduce the disguise of unemployment, then your best policy fiscal action is to increase social transfers, is what the model is saying. First, we are right that due to the data restrictions that the PNAS only begins in 2012, it helps that the magnitude of the fiscal multipliers are not reliable. But there is one, there is still one exercise that we must have to do. It's the first, uh, the model specification. Uh, you can have two model specifications. One is only official unemployment data and the latter specification with true unemployment. In order to see if when we use a brother taxi for unemployment, it turns or do not changes the values of the multipliers. That's, I think, is our basic guess.
Employment, whether it is increasing overall or not, because that's not just about unemployment that we want to, you know, to have policies, but also for employment as such. Okay, eh, let's quickly move to Davila Fernandez. Thank you very much.
Io voglio usare questo microfono, questo fancy, se posso. Eh, esatto, io bisogna ricamminare sennò. Sai il cerchio che qua, ci sto qua, scherzo.
Hey, Louis, the discussion.
So.
And then, starting, three, two, one. Good afternoon, or should I say good evening, dear friends and colleagues. Thank you very much for having me today. The title of my presentation is modeling green attitudes and informality along the north, the north-south divide. And I would like to start with, with these slides with a couple of pictures. I'm sure everybody recognizes this gentleman here on the bottom left. It's, it's, it's Marx, right? It's Keynes, it's Keynes. And, and the gentleman here on the right, at least the Latin American or Latin American friends in the audience should be able to recognize him, is Selsa Furtado. Of course, here we have the Lord is a tractor, but maybe the, the person that is a little bit or might be new is, is, is the gentleman in the middle here, can you recognize him? And most likely you can't, because the gentleman is my father, is my father. But he has everything to do with my, my presentation today. Not only because he's behind some of the analytical results that we will, that I will present, but because he introduced me to Selsa Furtado before any training, any formal training in economics. When I started in the beginning of my undergraduate program, started studying economics, he gave me Economic Growth of Brazil by Selsa Furtado, is a classic Formação Econômica do Brasil. And from Selsa Furtado, I moved to Keynes, I discovered Keynes and a disequilibrium approach to macroeconomics, to growth. This is equilibrium approach that is intrinsically nonlinear. So, I really like this paper because, not only because the economy counted, but because personally, I'm, I'm, I'm very attached to the, to the ideas behind, behind it. And, and every, as I said, everything starts with, with Furtado, with structuralism and the, and the CLAC, the Economic Commission for Latin America and Caribbean. And these scholars, they presented, they continue to, 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 to try to present a comprehensive view of development processes that include growth, include structural change, structural change, income distribution in, in a process that is intrinsically dynamic. So always highlighting this dynamic element. And a central, a central, a critical part of their analysis has always been, as, as Professor Rorero highlighted, mentioned, a structural heterogeneity, the question of the, 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 the problem of the issue of the dual, of the dual economy. And this is structural heterogeneity that has many dimensions. So you can think, for example, a, a, a demographic or geographical dimension. If you look at Brazil, most of the population live in the coast, in the middle of the country is a little bit empty. But you also have structural heterogeneity in terms of income distribution. The rich, the rich in Brazil are among the richest in the world. The poor in Brazil are among the poorest in the world. And, and something similar happens in Peru, Bolivia, Argentina. Of course, we also here have a matter of the sexual composition of the economy. Because economies like Brazil has companies that are technologically leaders in the world, like Embraer, Petrobras. But we also have a subsisting sector, high levels of informality coexisting with this high productivity, high productivity sector. So the moment we, we, we kind of agree that it's possible to have multiple equilibrium and development is not a linear process. I think the door opens to study the possibility of precisely multiple equilibrium and study the basis of attraction. And I will try to, to explain a little bit more what I mean by that. But if I'm thinking about climate change, and this paper is about climate change, so I'm, I'm, I'm doing this huge detour to arrive to climate change, there is an additional dimension of structural heterogeneity that perhaps some of us downplay, that I would like to bring to the table, that is heterogeneity in the way we think. And why I think, and why this, this, this important, well, if we're thinking about climate change, scientists agree that climate change is real, it's human made, we should do something about it. But then when you go to the general public, they seem to be divided between those that believe climate change is important and those that don't think it's, it's a big, it's a big thing. I call that heterogeneity in ecological thinking. I believe that's an issue, because limiting global warming requires cohesion and coordination among the players of the, of the economic system. And when we look at the literature on, on the topic, on heterogeneity and ecological thinking, the existing scholarship is, is very problematic from our point of view, because treats developed and emerging countries as systems occupying a linear development path. And that's problematic for the reasons that I mentioned before. Developing economies are structurally different. They have a huge informal sector. They are dual, intrinsically dual in nature. So just to, to try to give you a more concrete view of what I'm talking about. In terms of service like this, you have many, you find many in the literature. I'm using the World Risk Poll, just because I interview people in around 140 countries, more, almost 150,000 people. And we, if we look at the global north, so we have Europe and the United States, we, we kind of have this division between Europe and, and, and the United States in terms of ecological attitudes. Europe in greener colors is a lot more conscious than the United States when we have this division, Democrats, Republicans. Some people believe climate change is a hoax or something, some believe it's, it's real. But this, this division also appears in the global south. If we look at, for example, Latin America versus Asia, Asia in much darker, darker brown, while South America is in green. And here is an index, this index goes between minus one and one, and will be very useful for, for the model I will present in a couple of minutes. This index basically consists in the share of those that believe climate change is a very serious threat. In this case, in the case of this question, how serious a threat do you think climate change is? The share of those that answer yes, minus the rest of the population. So of course, if, if everybody says yes, climate change is a big threat, you're doing one minus zero, so your index becomes one. If everybody says no, climate change is not a big threat, you're doing zero minus one, so your index goes to minus one. If every, if half of the population says it's a threat, you're doing fifty minus fifty, so you go to zero. You can be anywhere between minus one, minus one and one. So the global north is, is divided somehow, we have heterogeneity in ecological thinking, the global north. But we have heterogeneity in ecological thinking also, also in the global south. Now, what happens if we put together a heterogeneity in ecological thinking and the dual economy problem? And that's what this graph is doing. So here in the horizontal axis, we have as before, green attitudes, our index phi between minus one and one in the horizontal axis. But in the vertical axis, we build a formality index. In the same way we built phi, we take the share of the formal employment minus the share of the informal employment. And then, of course, if everybody is formal, omega will be equal to one, one minus zero. If everybody is informal, omega will be equal to minus one, because you're doing zero minus one. If you have fifty fifty, fifty minus fifty, zero. So your labor force is equally divided between the formal and the informal sector. When we put our formality index together with our green attitudes, we have these four quadrants. The first quadrant in the blue, in the blue region, we have countries in a desirable state. Most of your workers, most of your agents are in the formal sector, and people believe climate change is a big deal. In the third quadrant, we have this red area. Nobody should like to be there, because you have high informality and people that don't believe climate change is real. Now, blue and red areas are kind of the, the intuitive, the traditional way of thinking about climate change. You think the rich care about climate change, the poor, they have other concerns. They don't really, they don't really think about climate change. The blue and the red areas, that's, that's the reasoning maybe behind constructions like the environmental cousin scarf. Environmental cousin scarf is telling, when you are poor, you don't care about the environment. Then you, you grow, you pollute a lot, and then you start caring about the environment. So when you're rich, emissions start to go down. So the blue and the red areas are pretty intuitive. What is not intuitive is that we have countries in the gray areas. And we don't have few countries in the gray areas, we have a significant amount of countries, some very puzzling, like Bolivia. Very high informality and still people very conscious from an environmental point of view. So, from our perspective, I mean, the role of, of the informal sector in development is, remains quite controversial. Let alone the climate change problem. But the thing is that we know very little about the feedback mechanisms, from the dual economy thing to the heterogeneity and ecological thinking. And what this paper will try to do, the story I will try to present, is precisely a tractable model or, or as tractable as possible, a tractable framework to study the interplay between informality, the coexistence between formal and informal activities, and heterogeneity and ecological thinking, meaning the coexistence of people that believe and those that don't believe climate change is a serious, is a serious threat. So, I will not show you equations today. The paper has a couple of equations and a couple of, of, of propositions. If you're interested in the, in the analytical results, there is a working paper there, somewhere in the internet. But I will try to emphasize the main positives. So what is happening here, we have this, the two main dimensions of our, of our model, informality, omega between minus one and one, and green attitudes, phi, that also goes between minus one and one. So our story goes in the following way. Depending on which group wins in terms of green attitudes, you will choose a carbon tax. Just because if, if nobody thinks climate change is important, why should you adopt a carbon, a carbon tax in the first place? So, depending on the composition of the population in terms of green attitudes, you choose a carbon tax, society choose a carbon tax. But then a carbon tax, of course, is a cost, is a production cost. So firms respond to this carbon tax, this increase in the cost of polluting by increasing their search for energy-saving production techniques or increasing their search for carbon-neutral production techniques. This means the technology is going to change. If technology is changing, production, production will change, production, especially in the formal sector, the formal sector will change. Now, depending on economic performance, you will have an outcome in terms of the composition of your economy between formal and informal activities. Pollution is a subproduct of production. So as you are producing for a given technology, you will be polluting a certain amount. Your emissions will influence your green attitudes. But not only your, your, not only your perception of climate change depends on the quangs, on the consequences of polluting, but also depend on the composition of your economy in terms of formal and informal sectors. And why is that? And try to emphasize this, I presented this paper a couple of days in the US, and every time I presented it in Europe, I tried to emphasize this. When we think about the informal sector, I invite you to think about it as the person that sells cake in the bus stop to make a living. And when you think about the formal sector, then you can think about a factory, maybe, okay? So in, in formality, it's really something closer to a subsisting sector. Unuratore che lavora nero per arrivare al fine del mese. Okay, so, our idea here is that if informality is very high, informality is very high, you have other concerns, climate change maybe is a secondary issue. So, an increase in the share of formal, or the formal activities should have an impact in the way you perceive climate change as well. So, I promise I will show you only these two equations. And the reason why I show you only these two equations, because these two equations show very precisely the, the five channels, the five transmission channels that I have in mind. And all our numerical exercise, the numerical analysis that I will present, will consist basically in shutting down all channels and turning on certain channels to understand which channel is driving which result. That's basically our, our approach here. So in terms of, of formality, the composition of the economy in terms of formal and informal activities, we differentiate between a scale effect and a growth effect. What is the growth effect telling us? The growth effect is telling us that if the economy grows, people prefer to work in the formal sector rather than in informal sector. So if the economy grows, this increases the probability that a worker ends in the formal sector. And the scale effect is just telling you that if you're surrounded by people working in the informal sector, this increases the probability that you will also be informal. But if you're surrounded by people in the formal sector, this creates some sort of pressure also to work in the formal, informal activities. Now, in terms of green attitudes, we differentiate between three, three effects. We have a climate threat, that is just telling us that as you keep polluting, the consequences of climate change accumulate. And this, if we accept, the people respond to a threat in a certain way, this will increase the probability that you, to create some sort of climate awareness, okay? The formalization effect is what I mentioned before. If the size of the formal sector is bigger, then people are not working selling cake anymore. They are working in a nice factory, they have pension, they have access to health. So they have time to think about climate change. And finally, the pure fact is just that, if, if you live with, with Trump supporters, this kind of increases the probability that you will not believe in climate change. But if, if Greta Thunberg is your neighbor, this increases the probability that maybe you will, you will believe in, in climate, in climate change. So when we put all these ingredients together, we, we got to a dynamical system, it's a two-dimensional map. But let me jump to our numerical exercise, and we calibrate the model following values that you can find in the literature. So in the paper, we have a table directing the reader to, for each parameter, what is the justification for that, for that value, where we find that value in the literature. So, we shut up the scale and the group effects. So let me go here, we shut down the pure fact, and we shut down the scale effect. And we leave only formalization, climate threat and growth, okay? We call these, these three channels, the cross repercussion, the cross repercussion channels. So if we do that, the only two possible, we have three equilibria, the only two stable equilibria are the green formal and the non-green informal. So, what we're basically telling us, telling the reader, is that if there are no pure effects and no scale effects in the context of our model, the only two possible solutions are the common sense solutions, the common wisdom solutions. The rich cares about the environment, the poor don't care about the environment. And the red area is just showing you all the initial conditions that. And the red area is just showing you all the initial conditions that lead to the non-green informal economy. The blue area marks all initial conditions that lead to the green formal uh formal uh equilibrium point. How much time do I have?
Five minutes.
Six. No, no, five minutes. Yeah, yeah, no, no, it's more than that. So so um as a as a second step, we said, okay, let's, let's open the scale and group effect channels and shut down the others, okay? So the other three channels, we're shutting them down, and we're leaving just the scaling group effect sufficiently strong. In that case, we have four, the model has nine equilibria, but only four are stable. And we think this is an important result, because all four equilibria correspond to the four quadrants that we saw in a picture in the beginning of my of my presentation. So the, this, here we have coexistence of attractors. Uh uh initial conditions is a weak representation of path dependence, because initial conditions matter for where your economy is going. If you start in the attracting region, the blue area, you you will be, uh you will end up eventually uh in a in a state, in a developed state where people are environmentally conscious. But if you start in the attracting area of the of this gray uh on the fourth quadrant. Then you will, you will end up in an equilibrium where your economy is mainly formal, but it's not environmentally conscious. And so on and so forth for the red and the and the and the gray area in the second, in the second quadrant. So uh the model kind of reproduce uh somehow uh um the evidence stylized facts that we can can find uh uh in this literature. Now, from a policy perspective, we 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 start to think, is it possible to increase the area, the blue area, because everybody should be in the blue area, would like, would like to be in the blue area, because the moment you get in the blue area. This means that that initial condition will lead you to a more desirable state. So and uh wha- what what should we avoid in order to the red area uh not to increase or to be as small as possible? So um in in our next, in our next experiment, we said, okay, hi. We said, okay, um the carbon tax, it's it's not like policy makers are all the time hearing what the general public believes. Um, part of the carbon tax responds to what technocrats think. So the European Union, we have the European Commission, in China you have the Communist Party. Um, maybe in a small country like Bolivia, if you're part of a certain international agreement, that international agreement is binding. And you have to implement a certain tax even if you agree or not with that with that tax. So if you if you introduce autonomous carbon tax, what happens is that we we destroy, we destroy one of the gray areas and we kind of increase the the attracting region of the good, of the good equilibrium. So this is kind of of a of a of a defense for the implementation of an of a of a carbon tax that doesn't react to what the general public believes, okay? And and for a country that starts in the red and the red area, this presents the following um um. The, I don't know if debate is the right word, but the strategy, the choice of of development strategies, we have here. We could, a country that starts in the red area could debate what is the best uh uh development strategy. You could either develop for uh increase formality first and then care about the environment, which will require two shocks. One shock to jump from ra- red to gray vertically and one shock to jump horizontally from gray to blue. Two big push, two big push Allah Hirschman, classical development. But climate change crea, climate agenda, the green agenda creates uh an opportunity, a development opportunity window, because if instead of moving first right, left, uh up and then right, you move first right. Then you've, as long as that is an autonomous carbon tax component, you're ready for in the blue, in the blue area. And this opens the possibility to to eventually end up in a more desirable uh state. On the other hand, I know I don't have that slide here, okay? So um we also have in the paper, uh uh what happens if you adopt a carbon subsidy instead of a carbon tax? And you have a carbon subsidy, the red area increases actually, you want, one minute is more than enough. If we couple together the carbon tax with growth, if if you have enough growth, then uh we're able to get rid of of all the other equilibrium, we have uh all all initial conditions leading to the to the desirable blue state, and this just highlights the importance of growth uh in our in our analysis. So uh just some final considerations in the last two minutes, but the last minute that I had today. Um, climate change, in my opinion, is the greatest challenge of our of our generation. And uh classical authors like Lewis, like the A Clark, they are more relevant than ever, because the duality problem is still there, persists. What we try to do here is to use discrete choice, a theory, a very relatively simple model, combining five channels to show how heterogeneity and ecological thinking interacts with the duality problem along the global north, global south uh divide. And in the paper, we tried to provide a discussion, and maybe we could engage in this discussion here too, or maybe over coffee. On the different strategies for agreeing big push of uh Allah Hirschman, or if a big push or environmental being big push is a uh is something worth uh to discuss. So thank you very much, I hope I was on time, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you uh very much, Mazzio. Well, I think that um the concept of structural heterogeneity that you use is mil- mil- as you'll use it in your paper. In page two, you say, you're written, given that only the formal sector is assumed to pollute. Well, um this is not true, and I will say why. Uh first, we have to to have in mind, what is, what is the problem that we have at our hand? Climate change is basically made by the emission of GAG gases. In the so-called global south, a term that I do not like, because Australia and New Zealand are in the South Hemisphere, okay? But uh in the global south, such for instance as in Brazil. The main source of GAG emission is not manufacturing activities, is not construction activities. Is not even generation of electricity, is basically change in land use, which means deforestation. Deforestation in Brazil is highly not only an informal activity, but is a criminal activity. So uh the idea that the 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 pollution, which for me means emission of GAG gases is uh only created by the formal sector of the economy, uh is not true. For the global south, the informal sector is the whole problem. Is that has the the lion's share of the problem of climate change. So for Brazil to made his task in terms of achieving the goals of the Paris Agreement. What we have to stop is deforestation, which is not a thermal activity, a thermo-economic activity. And as well occurred in Brazil, occurred in other countries as Indonesia or other Latin American economies, one and so forth. Uh and my second observation is again, uh as I made previously in my exposition. Uh, do not confuse formality or informality with uh a structural heterogeneity. Structural heterogeneity is not defined by the legal uh status of a job. You you can have a very high productive job and you can be informal, okay? But uh heterogenous uh structural heterogeneity means that there are huge differences of productivity levels between economic sectors. And my last observation, you try to combine two strands of literature with this Latin American structuralism with agent-based models. Well, can be done, maybe, but I have to 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 take an observation that for Latin American structuralism does not matters if individuals are different. What matters is the structure of production, okay? So the structures are important, the differences in structures, not difference between individuals. So people, it's of course that people are different, they can have different thoughts. But this is not what really matters for Latin American structuralism. What matters is difference in the structures of society, of economies. They, for instance, the answer that Cowdor gives to Pazzinetti in nineteen sixty-six. Uh when Cowdor finally uh answered to Pazzinetti, because Pazzinetti uh told that Cowdor make a logical slip in his uh nineteen fifty-six uh paper. And Cowdor said, well, I think that Mr. Pazzinetti do not understand what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about difference between classes of people, but I'm talking in difference about class of rents, of income. So the uh high propensity, uh high self-propensity out of profits and low propensity to save out of wages is because the institutional differences, not because of personal differences uh in terms of saving behavior, okay? That's mine.
Moment, that is very interesting, the topic. But I invite you to more analyze in depth the conceptual aspect that link informality sector and green attitude. The probably is not the uh very stressed the channel through which is possible to connect these two different uh why is interesting. And people sometimes use the term of poor and rich, but poor rich is another uh question. No, no, to say that probably could be very interesting, but could be interesting also to express uh exactly the channels through which is important, uh this kind of relationship.
Sure.
No, I I I just a curiosity, because the this is the second time, uh I I listen to the to the presentation, I always enjoy it very much. In in the map, uh it occurred to me that Nordic European countries are all yellow.
Yes, 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 it's 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 puzzling for me too, and we have a have a Jibo paper on that. Uh, but I can, I can see a couple of things about that.
Yes.
Okay, so um thank you very much for for uh uh your comments and and suggestions, and this is a work in progress, so we haven't submitted it yet. So now, I think now is the moment to to clarify things, and maybe if if it's necessary to explain better certain things in the in the paper, now is the moment to do that. So um I, there were four comments, let me to, let me start to remember, okay, the first one. Um, I I guess, I guess the first comment, your your first comment, I I will answer that um everything goes back to why we build models and what is the purpose uh of building models. So I try to see models as a way of telling a story uh and somehow guaranteeing that the story is intrinsically consistent, because otherwise the math is wrong. So that's my approach uh to modeling. And uh what we try to do here is to study certain channels that have been presented in the literature. And uh try to understand which channel is is leading to which result. And how these results could eventually be connected to general stylized facts that you observe without doing enough econometrics, just more visual visual data. And we have a set of five channels that allowed, that allowed uh uh to to reproduce certain stylized, certain stylized facts with within, what in my opinion is uh uh um an honest differentiation between formal and informal activities. Uh meaning the formal sector is much more energy-intensive, because it's capital-intensive relatively to the informal sector. Uh they are relatively disconnected, the informal sector has low productivity, which is constant. And these are elements that are present uh 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 in the in the model. Now, um if you tell me that in your opinion, uh the climate, climate change problem in developing countries is much more related to deforestation, I I would agree with you that uh that deforestation is a big, big problem, especially for countries like Brazil that have a huge uh uh um uh tropical forest. And I think the 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 model is sufficiently tractable to allow to introduce other elements, deforestation is one of them. Um, I I presented a paper a cou- a couple of times and uh sometimes the audience raises the 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 gender element. Because uh male, female have different approaches to 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 perceptions of climate change. So these are elements that I feel that the 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 model is sufficiently flexible to allow the the introduction of of other of other channels and and remove channels that that you might not think that are that are important. So uh okay, so that was, I think, that that, no, that addresses your first comment. Now, the second comment about structuralism and structuralism not caring on what people think. Um, we could, we could debate that over coffee, but but the last the original writings of the structuralist authors, definitely, they didn't have much on culture and 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 the way minds work. But the last writings by Fortado, for example, they highlight a lot uh the cultural element and uh and the need, for example, of sovereign culture. And so I I would say that the the late Fortado, or the last years of Fortado, he was Minister of Culture uh in his in his last phase. So he was also interested in somehow in heterogeneity and ecological thinking or inter virginity in thinking, he didn't call it that way. Uh uh but that's, but that's something uh different. Uh about uh, so so I I will end my reply to your second point there. But about what Giulio Giulio uh asked, um I, the the channel that we have in mind connected informality and green attitudes is just is kind of a, uh is very much close to the um hierarchy of needs uh uh literature. So the idea that your needs have a hierarchy, and you try to satisfy first your basic needs. And later on, and environmental and environmental concerns will be some 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 sort of luxury good. Yeah. So um I would, that that's that's a motivation, so the i- i- if if you, if you work in the formal sector, your basic needs would be somehow satisfied, so this will increase the probability that you will care about about the environment. That's the mechanism we have in mind. Now, uh we try to refer to the literature on that uh in the paper. But of course, we can debate the relevance of the of of that of that literature. Uh uh but that's, in defense of the model, that's kind of the reasoning or the rationale that we had, that we had in mind. It's a direct fact. Sure? Sure, 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 sure. Yes, yes, yes. You want the direct channel from income to attitudes?
We cannot have a last conversation.
Finally.
The idea what channel will do the income of the ground is a question, was just a question of the. Okay, the question is clear, at least to me.
The question is not clear to me, over coffee. And then, uh I don't remember Zeta's point, Zeta.
Zeta.
Zeta, what was your point?
Uh, I would go Sweden.
Oh, yes, Sweden, so for the Nordic countries, for the Nordic countries, we don't have, we don't have, we we can only speculate. Uh when I present a paper, uh some 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 colleagues speculated maybe it's because uh there is this sort of feeling that because they are uh in their, close to the North Pole. Um somehow they could benefit from climate change, uh because uh like Russia, like Russia. Many areas that right now you cannot occupy, they, you will be able to explore minerals, or you'll be able to explore agriculture. We could also speculate that it's because since they are already developed, maybe they have a strong faith in technology. And they think that uh it's not a big deal, because eventually we'll have, we'll create a technology that that overcomes, that overcomes that. Wh- whatever explanation we give to that, I, i- i- in my opinion, brown colors are unjustifiable. So we could, we could have marginal differences in this picture. I'm perfectly fine that the Nordics may be a light green and Italy is strong green. But brown, we shouldn't have brown, and the fact that we have coexistence of brown and green colors, for me, it speaks about heterogeneity and ecological thinking. Yeah, thank you.
Right now, it's the turn of Chiara Grazini, we are losing five, five to ten minutes every turn. Okay, twenty minutes.
Ah, good afternoon, today I present the work about the impact.
Today I present the work about the impact of the environmental policy on the international competitiveness, but analyzing the moderating effect of the complexity and the pollution intensity. We can start from the conceptual framework of the work. Because when you consider the climate change, nowadays, we have to combine two different problems. From one hand, we have the problem of the climate change, but sometimes we have the problem to ensure an inclusive, just transition. So Guarini and Orellero in two thousand twenty, proposed ecological structural change as a viable solution to the environmental and social challenges. But for starting the transformation of the production system for shifting the inputs, the labor, the capital from the traditional sector to the modern ones, we need, in particular, when we want to shift the input for improving the performance, the environmental performance of our production system, we need a more proactive rule of the institution and the public policies. And this is in particular important if you consider the developing country that where the ecological transformation is more difficult because they suffer of premature industrialization process because they increase their resilience on the production, the export of primary goods and low tech technologies. And in particular, for sustaining the ecological transition, we need an ecological structural change, but also a technological structural change based on the diffusion of the eco-innovation. Because eco-innovation generate more efficient process, improve the productivity and environmental performance and can create competitive advantages for companies. But the technological and the market factor are not sufficient for starting this virtual cycle. So we need more stringent environmental policies. In the literature, we can identify two opposite positions. We have the pollution even hypothesis and in the other part, we have the Porter hypothesis. If we consider the first one, so we consider the pollution even hypothesis of environmental regulation is considered additional cost because companies have to shift financial resources, labor or other inputs to the reduction of pollution, improvement of environmental performance. So this part can reduce their profitability and reducing their international competitiveness. So the environmental regulations consider an obstacle to the international competitiveness and the pollution even hypothesis suggests that the polluting industries can relocate the polluting activity in countries that are characterized by a lower stringency of environmental regulation. On the contrary, we have the Porter hypothesis that suggests environmental regulation is an incentive for the diffusion of the clear, the technology, the diffusion of the eco-innovation. So the eco-innovation can represent a winning strategy for sustaining the ecological transition and an inclusive group. And in particular, this was formulated by Porter, Porter Van der Lys, identified three different versions of the Porter hypothesis. In the first one is the weak version that suggests simply a stringent environmental regulation can sustain the diffusion of the innovation. Then we have the narrow version because we can identify different kind of environmental policies. So they suggest that the more flexible environmental instrument, such as the market instrument, we can consider taxes, subsidies, can improve the environmental performance of firms by stimulating the adoption innovation. And finally, we have the strong version of the Porter hypothesis. The environmental regulation sustain the diffusion of the environmental innovation. The firms can improve the environmental performance. Sometimes the introduction of eco-innovation can generate competitive advantages for this firm. And in particular, if we consider the work of Costantino and Mazzanti of two thousand twelve, they want to explore the validity of the Porter hypothesis in the European context and analyzing this hypothesis, they suggest two different, they verify the strong version of the Porter hypothesis, identify an overall effect of environmental policies on the international competitiveness of the manufacturing sector export. But in particular, they propose a strict strong version. The environmental policy, in particular, the instruments that are targets for diffusion, for diffusion environmental innovation can promote the green exports. This seems to sustain the validity, general validity of the Porter hypothesis. But in reality, Petroni et al. suggests that we cannot consider general validity of this hypothesis, but it depends by some characteristics of the country. And in particular, in this work, they consider the pollution intensity, the level of pollution of country. And following this work, we want to test the moderating effect of the pollution intensity because Petroni in two thousand nineteen identified that the most stringent environmental regulation can create a competitive advantage, in particular, for the less polluting firm because they can sustain lower compliance cost. And what on the contrary, Fabizzi et al. in two thousand twenty four identify a positive effect for the more polluting firms because the polluting firms are more, can drive more benefit or can take more benefit from the ecological transition. And so the ecological conversion can be more profitable for the more polluting countries. But then we consider another moderating factors because we consider the economic complexity in the new developments, the economic developments considered as a structural transformation of the productivity, the production system, in particular, the transformation of this structure from a primary sector characterized by the exploitation of natural resources of the commodity to a modern sectors. So we can consider this modern sector as a sort of, a sector that promotes the sophistication and diversification of the production structure that is characterized by higher complexes so they can sustain the economic progress. But the technical transformation of the society require complex capability, complex knowledge. So the country requires an higher quantity of knowledge, skills and capabilities for produce and export an higher quantity of sophisticated and complex goods. And in particular, we can use the economic complexity index as a proxy of this kind of knowledge that are required for shifting from the primary sector to a more complex, sophisticated modern sector. So in this, within this perspective, we can consider the ecological structural change as an ecological sophistication of the social, cultural, technological dimension because higher economic complexity are today an higher investment, research and development can drive the green innovation. The engagement in green activity can create a competitive advantages for company for the introduction of new green product or new market. So and in particular, the green product that are characterized by more complexity require more interdisciplinary knowledge. So I consider are more complex goods. But we know the positive effect of the economic complexity but sometimes there is no evidence about the moderating effect of the economic complexity on the impact on the environmental regulation on international competitiveness. So we want to verify the validity of the strict strong version of the Porter hypothesis produced by Costantino and Mazzanti, but also we want to verify if there exists a single moderating effect of the pollution intensity of the economic complexity and also if there exists a possible joint effect of the economic complexity and the environmental regulation on the international green competitiveness. We use the OECD database net contain a lot of variables related to the environmentalization. In particular, we consider the period that starts from nineteen ninety to twenty sixteen because it's the last day of the availability of the data about the environmental export. And we consider for OECD countries, as I said before, the dependent variable that represents the green international competitiveness is the environmental good export market share. And the model control for the environmental stringency policy index that is proposed by the OECD that give a range that come from zero to six and measure the stringency of the environmental regulation at national level. And this is particularly useful because we have a composite index that compose into different component, rate of market, non-market and measure that support introduction of the clear energy technologies. We consider the economic complexity index as a proxy of the sophistication and the diversification of the production structure that represent the knowledge, the touch knowledge and the skills acquired by the country. And also we control for the total GIA greenhouse emission that is used as a proxy of the pollution intensity. We control for the real exchange rate and world GDP. And in particular, to analyze the impact of this variable on the international economy, we used the GLS, which is a square estimate that allow us for controlling for the heteroskedasticity and the misarial correlation. And in particular, we should use two equations. And the first one, we consider the single effect of the EPS but also the moderating effect of the economic complexity index. And in the second one, we consider the single effect of the economic complexity, the pollution intensity, but also we introduce the interaction term between the EPS, the economic complexity index and the pollution intensity. Starting from the first table, I know that is difficult to, it is stable, but I want to show the main results. All the questions show that the baseline model is significant at one percent. So the baseline model is robust. So the real exchange rate show a positive effect. So the evaluation of the real exchange rate enhances the best competitiveness. And same times, the world GDP also has a positive effect because I say before, Marvin, the green products are considered as luxury goods. So when the level of income increase, people will require an higher quantity of green product. So this is a positive effect of the environmental export. But the main.
Isn't it the share of world?
Sì, yes. The dependent variable is the environmental good export market share.
Of each country, of one country.
Of one country, yeah, yeah, yeah.
For environmental.
On the mean.
Of the mean of what?
So we do. The OECD average.
So Italy increase its export of green food with the European mean. Okay.
The share market share. This is the divide on the mean.
The European mean for each period or over a long period of time?
No, all the.
So the effect of the increasing world GDP should not show up, no?
It's world GDP.
Okay, so the European mean increases.
No, market share on the mean.
Because it's, I mean, it's since it is a share, however you measure, wouldn't be affected by the level of world GDP. Because if it increases the market for environmental good, it increases it for everybody. So the share shouldn't be affected by the level. This is a. No, it was just, let's go on. We can discuss it later.
Okay, but the first table suggests, it supports the science identified by Petroni et al. We cannot consider general validity of the Porter hypothesis, but it depends by the circumstances because the index of the stringency of the environmental regulation is not significant alone, but become positive and significant when we introduce the interaction with the economic complexity. So this means, and also it becomes positive and significant when we consider the lag of three and five years. This means that the green policies need time for being effective because the consumers actually completed their consumption habit. But sometimes, they introduce the environmental innovation, need time for introducing technology, starting to produce the new product and obtain competitive advantages. As I just before, the economic complexity represents an important variable that drive the international competitiveness because this is used as a proxy of the knowledge, the skills acquired by the company. And in particular, the green products, the green export require more complex interdisciplinary capabilities and knowledge. And a more complex product structure increase the capacity of the country to produce and export diversified products, in particular, green product. But in also, it's important moderating variable. So if we introduce a more stringent environmental regulation, more complex economies, we can accelerate the ecological conversion of the production structure. And sometimes you can create a competitive advantages for our companies. Then we consider the second table, in relation to the second equation. We can identify a significant effect of the pollution intensity of the international green competitiveness. In particular, we confirm the results obtained by Fabizzi et al. in two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty four, that suggests that the positive effect of the environmental regulation is more significant for the more polluting countries and partly for the more polluted fields because they can obtain higher benefit from the ecological conversion. But same time, also we can identify a significant joint moderating effect of the pollution intensity and economic complexity on the international green competitiveness. So because a complex economy or the capabilities, the technology for producing green products to introduce green technology that allow to improve the environmental performance, reduce their greenhouse emission. So also complex economy produce more complex physically goods so they can have competitive advantages. So the combination of economic complexity and the stringent environmental policy can represent a winning strategy for sustaining ecological transition and ecological structural change that is based on the clean sophistication and diversification of the product structure. So to conclude, I think. The paper identified the possible interaction between the stringent environmental regulation. the stringent environmental regulation and the international green competitiveness. But it suggests that we cannot consider general validity of the Porter hypothesis. We have to analyze the circumstances, the particular characteristics of the country. So they have to, the policy maker that to promote investment that facilitate transition to diversify economic structure and sophisticated green produce production. So because creating a more complex sophisticated production structure also to increase the economic resilience and enhance the international competitiveness of our country. But same times, the green innovation and the green product are more complex, are more sophisticated, are more diversified, require interdisciplinary knowledge. So they need of international cooperation, but also link, the links network between heterogenous holders. So and in particular, the country that export complex industrial policy and industrial product are characterized by a neither or present international competitive advantage, but same time, are characterized by a more social equality. So the diversification and sophistication of economy that represent also a strategy for obtaining the structural change required by the SEPA. I can conclude, so this is the limitation and threshold, because we want to enlarge the samples and and continue to analyze the effect.
Thank you, Chiara, for a very interesting presentation, a very interesting paper. You have my comments in writing, so here I will just mention two things, maybe suggestions in terms of one more inform and another more in content in the econometric part. So the most substantial maybe are the econometrics. I would encourage you guys to maybe treat a little bit more careful that the time that you're using, the time period that you're using for all variables. Just to be sure that you control or you avoid for a reverse causality, because right now, all your variables are in T. And even when you introduce lags, the lags interact with variables that are in T. And I think it makes perfectly sense that higher economic complexity leads to environmental exports. But you could also make the opposite case. Higher environmental exports are increasing your economic complexity. The same thing for the EPS, higher environmental stringency increases environmental exports. But you might just adopt legislation that is environmentally stringent, because you already have an advantage, an initial advantage in terms of environmental exports. So just to be careful with the lags and try to bring more robustness to these econometrics, both in terms of control variables. Because right now, you really don't have many standard macro controls, human capital, capital stock, you know, this kind of degree of openness, this kind of controls. And also in terms of robustness, in terms of estimators, because you're using just one estimator. And you could explore that avenue. In terms of form, the paper connects ecological structural change with Porter hypothesis and with economic complexity. And I like very much that. Maybe I would suggest to invert the order of the presentation, because right now, you're starting with ecological structural change, and then you get to Porter hypothesis and economic complexity. So the reader gets the idea that your paper is about ecological structural change. But your paper is really about Porter's hypothesis and economic complexity, which have everything to do with new developmental list, and so on and so forth. But maybe you can start. My goal is Porter hypothesis and blah. And I also contribute to the literature on. And I think selling the paper might be easier in that way. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment, for the suggestion. We are trying to introduce the more robust robust check. Changing the control variable, also introduce, for example, another indicator for the economic complexity. We substitute, for example, we try to estimate the same regression using the fitness the fitness complexity that is proposed by the World Bank. Also, we introduce control variable, the greenhouse emission on GDP, also the greenhouse emission per capita. Or dummy for developing country, because we have forty OECD countries. So also, we want, we have a dummy, but also, we use a categorical variable that we divide by emerging, developed, international, not here, we are testing, but
Well, thank you very much for, Chiara, and you for such an interesting paper. Well, I'm not, I don't have a comment, but the suggestion for future research is to analyze not only the impact of exports, but also for imports. Just to analyze what would be the the broad, the general impact of this kind of environmental regulation, because you are only analyzing what would be the behavior on exports. But if you want to analyze the impact of environmental regulation on economic activity, you must fully, you must focus on imports. Just for instance, to understand, for instance, the current impact that the environmental regulation is having, for instance, for certain economic activities like in Europe, like for instance, the metallurgical industry, or for instance, the automotive industry. And where we are detecting that this regulation would be having an impact, clear impact, not such much, well, for instance, in terms of the production of the automotive industry is declining. But what we are generating is instead an increase in the imports of such activity. This is important from the long-term perspective, because if this kind of regulation is leading to, or is generating a rising in the imports, for instance, of electrical vehicles from China, this creates a problem for the economic activity in the long term, because we can be facing the problem, the threat, too, for the the shrinking of this important economic activity.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you for the
My suggestion.
For the suggestion, because we are focused.
See to consider this, the impact of the net export. Yes, thank you so much for this suggestion.
Quickly to the online contribution, if I know how to do it, I don't know.
Now, to inter
Now, please, Professor Marchetti, you can start, perhaps share your slides if you have.
I have a slide, but I cannot share. It's not allowed for me to share.
Okay, now?
No.
Now you
Because here, I cannot share, I can have to change the
No, you should, have you opened your microphone?
Yes.
But actually, lo sentiamo. It's okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Eh, si.
Are you listening to me? Are you able to listen to me?
Senti, scusa, ti dispiace andare, uscire, chiedere a Luigi Salvati? Dove lo vedi? Dove lo modifico questa autorizzazione?
Quello il file da condividere?
Eh, no, lo deve condividere lui da remoto. E questo signore qui lo deve condividere. C'è qualcosa che gli impedisce di condividerlo?
No.
You should be able to share your slides from your PC, from your device?
Nope, I'm not allowed here to share the slides.
Adesso perché?
Now, 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 now. Adesso Just a second. Now we can do that, just a minute. Okay, let's try.
Comunque adesso mi ha impostato come rena rena, quindi devo tenerlo fare.
Eccolo. Vediamo che ci riesco.
Hello, hello?
Diviso qualcosa?
For the moment, we only see a black thing.
Okay, I sent before the section started, I sent the the paper with the presentation, I sent the presentation by mail, perhaps you could
We also don't hear you well, so maybe you should do something with your microphone.
Okay, okay.
You open your file and then select it as something to be shared.
Okay, are you trying to?
Either share the screen or upload, share it out. You have to open.
Okay, just, just a second, I'm trying here. Are you listening to me?
Sente anche malissimo. Per la little questo capitino, okay, okay.
Sorry. Are you listening to me? Oh, no. You're listening?
Yes, we can hear you not very well, so perhaps you should stay closer to your microphone or increase the volume, I don't know. But we don't see PowerPoint. Or whatever.
I'm trying to share here the PowerPoint, since there is a problem here.
You can, you can share the screen to, in order to show us the the
Yes.
Next, open your slides and then share the screen.
I'm trying to do that, but I, for some, I have some problem here that I don't know if it's on the internet or on my computer.
Dica di togliere la condivisione e di farla di nuovo scegliendo il documento che è aperto.
You can close the sharing. They suggest you close the sharing and then open again, choosing the document you have opened.
Okay, I'm trying to do that, but just just a second, please. Sorry for this problem. I don't know what has happened here. Perhaps I could just speak about the
Could you just close your sharing the document, whatever you did with the system? I think the
dove stanno gli commandi, qui dove sono
So on the upper right of your screen, you have share, condividi in Italian, share. You should close the sharing. Whatever you are sharing now, you should stop, and then start again the sharing.
I'm trying to do that, but it's not working.
Yeah.
Perhaps?
Since the presentation by mail, and then we charged the presentation
To a quale mail? Which mail? We don't have any mail of the rule.
I'm here, I'm here.
I'll stop the sharing here. Okay, I will stop the sharing here.
Can you post your slides in the chat?
In effetti, mettere il documento.
It's not allowed for me to send anything through the chat.
Can you, can you please upload your PowerPoint in the chat, and we will try to share it?
The problem is that right now, I'm not allowed to share anything on the chat. The chat is closed for me.
La chat è disattivata per questa riunione.
Okay, wait a sec.
No, amore, David Romaniello non c'ha
But I can talk about the paper without the PowerPoint.
Qual è questa, questa qui?
Eh, non so, special session, no, non è special session, ma questa
No, mettiamola così.
La sessione si chiama eh, no, eh, si.
Come è questa?
Questa è quello lì, special session.
Aspetta un attimo, mettere Un big, la chat della riunione è attivata. Okay, sì. Adesso dovrebbe essere attiva.
So now you should be able to share, to put, to upload your PowerPoint in the chat.
Però potrebbe pure riprovare a condividere.
Or you try again to share it through the sharing thing.
Okay, I will try to send you by the chat here. How I do that? I never use things, it's my problem. I always have problems losing things.
Pide come fa a mandare al PowerPoint?
Drag and drop.
You should just drag it and drop it in the chat.
Okay.
Anche solo cinque minuti nella riunione. Perché rimangono solo cinque minuti nella riunione?
Per come sta impostata.
Eh, ma se poi lunga
Perhaps I could speak about the paper, you have just five minutes. And then I can give you basic ideas about And then I can give you basic ideas about the paper and then...
Are you the discussion with the... Ah, yeah, did you receive the paper? Ok, ok, please go ahead.
Ok. First, I'd like to thank the organizers of the conference and the organizers of this section. The name of the paper is "Investigating the dynamics of the profit rate, exchange rate and terms of trade in Brazil". The basic idea is to understand how exchange rate and terms of trade shape the profit rate. The paper is built on a decomposition of the profit rate. To look at the profit rate in terms of the profit share, potential capital output ratio and capacity utilization. The basic idea is that the exchange rate has...
Fatto su le rare, così lo vediamo meglio, almeno lo vediamo.
Are you listening to me?
Yes, please.
Are you listening to me?
Yes, yes, we see you on the big screen.
And you are listening?
You should try to stay close to the microphone.
Ok, I will try. Now it's better?
Ne può mandare lei?
Sì, se non hai sentito un... Venita. The basic idea is to see how the exchange rate and the terms of trade affect the profit rate through its...
Il digitale, il digitale.
Ok, we have a proposal here, since you have the address, the email address of Chiara Grazini, you could send her your PowerPoint and she can then save it on a USB pen and then we can show it, maybe.
I sent the PowerPoint before the section. I already did that.
Ha detto che te l'ha mandato prima della sessione. So she is checking.
Ok.
Ok, just wait a minute so we can see your...
Ok, thank you. I'm sorry for that.
Mettetelo sulla penna. Sti... Intanto lui la vede, no?
Si, adesso dividiamo.
Ci stanno diverte i qualsiasi... Sì, che le sapete. Sì, poi già si sente malissimo, no?
Mmm... Cioè così.
Facciamo che lui il lato, così si deve verificare, faccia mentre parla anche sullo schermo.
Ok, thank you.
Però facciamo vedere anche lui sullo schermo, si ferma un po', come si fa qui?
Domani spostano, non vedo niente.
Adalmi, when you want that I skip the slides?
Yes, please.
Forfons. Reparte. Cos'è che sono gli?
No, ma c'è qualcosa... No, la reporter fa una nostra cosa. Ah, perché stiamo condividendo noi?
Sì, va beh.
Quindi niente, soltanto perché... Eh però, però adesso stiamo condividendo il contenuto del... Eh, non si può fare così.
Ok. Adalmi, can you start?
Ok, thank you. Then the paper is a joint paper. It has this title "Investigating the dynamics of profit rate, exchange rate and terms of trade in Brazil". Please, the next. The basic idea is to see how the exchange rate on the terms of trade shape the profit rate, affect the profit rate. And the paper and the model that you see is based on the decomposition of the profit rate by Waiskopf, who has a famous paper. And when he makes the decomposition of the profit rate in the profit share, potential capital output ratio and capacity utilization. The basic argument is that the exchange rate has a nonlinear effect on the profit rate. Because an exchange rate devaluation rise the profit share and reduce the potential output capital ratio. An exchange rate appreciation declines the profit share and rise the capital output ratio. Then, the exchange rate has a nonlinear effect on the profit share depending on which movement is stronger. It is the rise of the profit share or decline of the potential capital output ratio. The terms of trade rise the profit rate by rising the profit share and the potential capital output ratio. Please? The next one, please.
Ok, this is the next.
Yes. You used this model to look at what happened in the Brazilian economy between 2001 and 2023. We employ a local regression that is a non-parametric technique. And you also employ exchange rate and direct quotation as you employ in Brazil. An increase in the exchange rate means that you have a depreciation of the exchange rate. The key contribution is to look at the effect of the exchange rate in terms of trade and the profit rate, that is a novelty. And the literature that we are employing in the paper that is based on Claxton Marx and the formula. Next, please. Here you have the definition of the profit rate. The profit rate is defined as profits. As the ratio between profits and total advanced capital. And you have here the decomposition of Waiskopf. That you can see the profit rate as the multiplication between the profit share, the potential output capital ratio and the level of capacity utilization. Here you have the equations that shows how the exchange rate and the terms of trade influence the profit share. The influence goes through the effects of both exchange rate and terms of trade has a nominal wage and GDP deflator. Please go ahead. I will try to... The basic idea is that exchange rate devaluation rise the profit share because the effect on the GDP deflator is higher than in nominal wage. GDP deflator has a higher number of tradable goods than the nominal wage. And the higher the terms of trade, the higher the profit share. Please go ahead. And here you have how the exchange rate and terms of trade affect the potential output capital ratio. Here the basic idea is that exchange rate on terms of trade affect the price of capital goods at higher velocity than the GDP deflator. And here it's possible, it's interesting to show that the potential output capital ratio it depends on the relative price of GDP divided by the relative price of capital goods. Please go ahead. Go ahead, because then I showed... Go ahead, please. Here, I sum up the equations. How exchange rate affects the profit rate? The devalued exchange rate correspond to higher profit share but lower potential output capital ratio. Then when the devaluation of the exchange rate, the profit share rise. But the potential output capital declines because the price of capital goods grows faster than the GDP deflator. When you have an overvalued exchange rate or have the opposite, then the result of this combination is that you have a nonlinear relationship between the exchange rate and the profit rate. The terms of trade have rise the profit share and rise the potential output capital ratio. Then the higher terms of trade implies a higher profit rate. And please go ahead. Then now you look at the Brazilian data. The data source is a paper that I wrote, it was published last year. And the real exchange rate, the data source is the Brazilian Central Bank. The data for terms of trade is the Fonseks, that is the Brazilian agents that takes care of the data on export and Brazilian imports. Please go ahead. Here you have the relationship between the real exchange rate and the profit rate. As you can see, there is... When the exchange rate is overvalued, the profit rate is higher. When the exchange rate is undervalued, the profit rate is high. You have a nonlinear U-shaped relationship between the real exchange rate and the profit rate. Why it's happened? You see, here you have the profit rate and the terms of trade. Again, here you have a positive relationship between the terms of trade and the profit rate. Why the... When you have the overvalued exchange rate or have a higher exchange rate or have a higher profit share and a higher profit rate is that the growth rate of nominal wage is higher than the growth rate of GDP deflator. When the... When the exchange rate is undervalued, the nominal wage grows at lower pace than the GDP deflator. It is a price mechanism. The next, please. The next. Oh. One behind, please. No, behind. One behind, please. Here you have the real exchange rate and the potential capital output ratio. You can see that when the exchange rate is overvalued, the capital output ratio is higher than when the exchange rate is undervalued. Why it's happened? Because again you have this problem of price. When the exchange rate is undervalued, it is overvalued, the GDP deflator grows faster than the price of capital goods. When the exchange rate is undervalued, the capital goods, the price of capital goods grow faster than the GDP deflator. Then, the relative price of declines and the output capital out declines and the profit rate declines. Next, please. Here you have the... One back. Here you have the relationship between the terms of trade and the potential capital output ratio. When the terms of trade improves, the potential capital output ratio rise and the profit rate also rise.
You have five minutes at most.
Ok, we are going to the end. Next, please. Here you have the relationship between the exchange rate and the level of capacity utilization. The capacity utilization is higher when the exchange rate is undervalued because internal market is fine, the demand is based on wage and consumption of families. When the exchange rate is undervalued, the level of capacity utilization increases because export increase more than imports, the starting demand increase. Next, please. Again, here you have the terms of trade. Again, when the terms of trade increase, you have both case, export increase and families, households increase their consumption and demand expand. Next, please. The problem is to look at the terms of trade and the real exchange rate at same time is that the terms of trade has important impact on the real exchange rate. When the the terms of trade is low, the exchange rate is, real exchange rate is undervalued. When the terms of trade is high, the exchange rate is overvalued. Then the terms of trade has a direct effect on the profit rate and has an indirect effect on the profit rate through the exchange rate. Next, please. The final remarks. There is a nonlinear. You shape the relationship between the profit rate and the exchange rate. Devaluations may rise the profit share by increasing the GDP deflator more rapidly than the nominal wage. But on the other side, the evaluation may reduce the potential output capital ratio as the price of capital goods rise faster than GDP deflator. The terms of trade influence, also influence the profit rating, impacting the profit share, the potential capital output ratio and capacity utilization, rising the three of them. But it also indirectly impacts the profit rate through its effects on the exchange rate. When we look at the Brazilian experience, higher terms of trade coupled with exchange rate appreciation allowed to expand the wage share and the profit rate in Brazil during the 2000s. But in the next decade, the opposite happened with important political consequences for Brazil. The basic, our point is that, that is that there are fundamental effects of the exchange rate and the terms of trade on the profit rate, capital accumulation and economic growth that we still need a better understanding. Do not fully understand what are the, the giant effects of these variables on economic growth, distribution, capital accumulation. This paper is one first step on this direction. Thanks a lot for your patience. Thanks a lot for having me on the conference.
Thanks you, Adami, for the very interesting presentation and for the paper. Also, it's very interesting, it's full of the equation and empirical estimation. I'm just curious because in the paper you say that the profit rate increase for an improvement of the term of trade at appreciation of the real exchange rate, but also for a combination of them. But when you analyze the effect of the term of trade, you identify a direct effect and indirect effect throughout the real exchange rate. In the last, my curiosity about the last empirical estimation. You consider only the direct effect of the of the improvement on term of trade and the depreciation of the real exchange rate, but also you consider a sort of interaction term that allow for control for the direct and indirect effect of them.
When I was preparing now the presentation, the question that you rose came back to my mind. And I think that I have to spend more time and look back to equations to see, to have a better look at these direct and indirect effects. Even we can think that depending on the kind of country will have one direct, one effect dominating the other. I believe in Brazil that the direct effect dominates. But both effects are present. Here, I believe that economics would work better than the local regression. Perhaps to see, to have a better idea of what was the direct and the indirect effect. Perhaps on the next paper, I will have to use economics instead of using local regression that is a technique that offers the possibility of visualizing the data. But for this kind of interaction, it's not the best technique to...
Okay, it's simply a starting point for analyzing also the possible interaction. Thank you. Thank you very much. So we can declare close to this section. Thank you to our participants. Thank you for having patience with the technical problems of online communications. Okay, good evening. Have a nice evening. Bye bye.
Bye bye. Thank you. Regalo. Thank you.